All right, it's 7 o'clock and before we open the county commission meeting, we have two items of public hearing or public notice for the opportunity for the public to speak on. So let me read on the first one. On October the 25th, 2022, the Bedford County Regional Planning Commission voted unanimously to give an unfavorable recommendation for a rezoning request from A1 to C1 for the location of 3034 Highway 41A North. That's tax map 42 parcel 37 dot oh three. The owner is Joseph Fulton citing spot zoning as the rationale for the unfavorable recommendation. This parcel was historically used as a convenient market prior to the passing of zoning resolution of Bedford County and thus enjoyed a non-conforming grandfather status for many years. The building and property, however, ceased to remain in business and closed for a number of years, losing its grandfather status. On December the 20th, 2012, the same owner of the property, Joseph Fulton, applied to the Bedford County Board of Zoning Appeals for a special exception to have a restaurant at the location under Article 4, Section 4 dot 041C, using uses permitted as special exception, 16 Restaurant, it's now number 24 in the rule, which was approved. This restaurant subsequently applied for a beer permit, which the Bedford County Beer Board, with the Bedford County Beer Board, and became a restaurant slash bar business referred to as the Empty Bottle II and operated for a number of years and also eventually closed. After closing, the owner decided to use the building for personal storage. The property owner is therefore allowed to use the building for a restaurant, just as it is, without a zoning classification change. While grandfathered, non-conforming commercial uses may continue operation in perpetuity unless ceased for a period of 30 months, then losing the grandfather status, special exception and zoning classification modifications do not expire. The special exception would not authorize it to be used as a convenient market, which is why the owner wishes to pursue a zoning classification change. And this is all under Article 6, Section 6 dot 02 pursuant to 13 dash 7208 of the Tennessee Code. When a non-conforming commercial, industrial, or other business use of any structure or land excepting non-conforming mobile homes or mobile home parks has been discontinued for a period of 30 months, it shall not be reestablished or changed to any use not in conformity with the provisions of the resolution. Now, this is the property on 41A after I read all of this. That used to be the Empty Bottle II. They're asking for a rezoning from A1 to C1. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak for or against that issue? If you would, raise your hand and come to the microphone and if you would state your name and where you live, you're going to need to hold the button down, I believe, for the microphone to work. So do you see that little button? You'll have to press and hold. Thank you.
My name is Howard Rupert. I'm a physician in the community. I live in the Rover Unibail area. When the Empty Bottle II was in operation, it caused a lot of conduct that was unbecoming of the community, I felt like. In particular, I wound up with a drunk lady in my front yard, passed out in midnight one night, in a winter night. So when I went out to assist her and called 911 for help, we went across these scanners that Dr. Rupert has a drunk lady in his front yard tonight, passed out. But seriously, though, I find there no good benefit from having another alcohol-serving restaurant in the Unibail area. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else in the community or in the audience that would like to speak for or against this particular rezoning request? Come up and state your name and tell us where you live. We'll press and hold that microphone button over here. There you go.
All right. My name's Ron Adcock and I own property across the road from this place of business or was a place of business. And I really have no objection to a convenience store. However, as my understanding, once it goes commercial, then it can be used for a lot of other purposes. And I do have a concern with that. And also, the planning or zoning board has looked at this and I believe it was unanimous. They've studied it and looked at it and tried to do things according to their plans that they have for the county. And I think the commission should respect the vote of the zoning board. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would make a comment regarding this property? Again, press the microphone and hold the button, please. There you go.
I'm Larry Hasty. I'm on the planning zoning board, but I'm also a neighbor to this location. And I've been there a long time, been there 42 years. And so I'd just ask you to support what the planning zoning board came forward with as unanimous decision to deny this request because we believe that it was spot zoning. We also don't know what would happen if it became a commercial property. And I know what has gone on there in the past, don't know if that would happen again in the future, we just don't know. But I think it would be spot zoning and I asked you to deny this request based on that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience wanting to speak on the 41A rezoning request? Okay, I don't see anybody or hear anything. We have one other rezoning request that was, again, subject to this public hearing. And so I'll read that. On October the 25th, 2022, the Bedford County Regional Planning Commission voted unanimously to favorable, to a favorable recommendation, the rezoning of 1170 Bellbuckle Wartrace Road. And that's on the corner of Fairfield Pike and Bellbuckle Wartrace Road. And the request was to rezone from A1 to C1 for the use as a convenient market near vicinity commercial and institutional uses and its location as a corner lot on a state highway and crossroad with collector streets was cited as rationale to favorably recommend the application. Is there anyone in the audience who wants to speak on this particular request? Okay, I don't see or hear anyone, so I want to declare the public hearing closed and ask you to stand as we open the county commission meeting. All right, we're going to have our parliamentarian lead us in prayer, please. All right, now the meeting officially opened by the Sheriff Austin Swin.
Hear ye, hear ye, the Bedford County Board of Commissioners is now in session. The Honorable Mayor Chad Graham's presiding.
Thank you. All right, so we got more of our new technology is in, so you got to press the button and hold. When you let off the button, you're no longer live for our county commissioners. You may see at some point on the screen, opportunity for some video. It is live streaming, all of us here tonight. And the first item is of a roll call by County Clerk Donna Thomas.
Commissioner Anderson?
Here.
Commissioner Boutwell?
Here.
Commissioner Boyette?
Here.
Commissioner Brothers?
Here.
Commissioner Epperson?
Here.
Commissioner Fair?
Here.
Commissioner Hooker?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Maddox?
Here.
Commissioner Neely?
Here.
Commissioner Pinson?
Here.
Commissioner Sanders?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Yeah.
Commissioner Adam Thomas? Commissioner Mark Thomas?
Here.
Commissioner Thompson?
Here.
Commissioner Vick?
Here.
Commissioner Yaki?
Here.
Seventeen present, one absent.
All right, next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the commission meeting on November the 8th, 2022.
Move to approve. Second.
All right, we've got a motion of second. Are there any questions or comments?
I've got one little comment.
Okay, Commissioner.
On the top of the third page, it says, on 110 houses, the Census Bureau estimates 2.77 per household, or it says 305 students. It should be 305 people.
Okay, we'll make that correction. Thank you for that. Is there any other comments or anything that we may have mistyped? All right, here are none, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, we'll make that correction. Thank you for that. Next item is the election of notaries for January.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion of second. Is there any other information to come out on that? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, we've got a couple of appointments we need to address tonight. The first one is Shovel Bedford County Library Board. I would like to put forward John Boutwell's name. Commissioner Gallagher had served in that role and I believe Commissioner Boutwell's agreed to serve in that.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, welcome aboard. All right, and the next item in the Shovel Bedford Partnership, Commissioner Sweeney had served in that role and I would put forward Commissioner Scott Johnson's name for that.
Second.
Motion second, great. All in favor? Any opposed? All right, we're moving on. Next item is, we actually have Charlie Curtis from the Tennessee County Commissioners Association, Executive Director, here tonight to do a presentation in honor and memory of Commissioner Brown. His family's present with us, his daughter Vivian and her husband Tony, as well as granddaughter Skye, right? And so come on up, guys, or to either place. I think to the front of here would be good, if we can do that.
Commissioners and Mr. Chairman, it's certainly an honor to be here again. I've got to make several trips to honor several of you for longevity and certainly Mr. Brown. I made one trip just for him. He'd served since 1982 and I think that was the third time I'd ever got to interact with him. And this year, for the first time, County Commissioner Association has brought out the Ralph Puckett Award. This is a county commissioner in Old Byan County that's served on a county commission since 1966. If he finishes this term, if the Lord lets him live, he will serve 60 years. We named this award after him. And my board elected to pick one commissioner each year out of East Tennessee, one out of Middle Tennessee, and one out of West Tennessee. So there's only three people that win this award annually, and this is the first time. We weren't getting a lot of nominations. I first just asked the county commissioners to nominate people on their county commission they felt was worthy of being recognized. And then I wasn't getting a lot of feedback, so I sent me an email to all the mayors and invited them to nominate. Since I have to interact with y'all, they don't know who's doing a good job. And Mayor Graham, he nominated John Brown for this award. And there were several from Middle Tennessee, and Mr. Brown was the one that my board picked. And this, we had an East Tennessee commissioner, I allowed him to pick the design and put it together. But this is the Ralph Puckett Award awarded to John Brown for extraordinary service to the citizens of Bedford County during your long tenure in service, Tennessee County Commissioners, 1922. It's an honor for me to be this. And we say honor.
We sure do miss him. I was telling them prior to the meeting opening, he used to call me, he called me Brother Mayor, and I know some of you heard that. But he would call me and say, Brother Mayor, I don't need anything, I'm just checking on you and praying for you. And I said, I appreciate that. And then it would come to, he probably could use something to eat, and then I'd be over his house in a day or two bringing him something, and we would sit around the table and talk. So I miss him a lot. He was certainly an asset to this body and to the community. And so I hope that each one of us can be half the steward and servant that he was, for sure. So thank you for that. Next item on the agenda is, under Rules and Legislative, this is the rezoning request. And now they're backwards on here from how we had them. So the first one is involving the one at Cascade. So let me read it. Rezoning request placed on the agenda by the Rules and Legislative Committee without a recommendation. And it was Dwayne Sullivan, chief manager of JD SP LLC, is seeking to make map 52 parcel 22 dot oh two, which is approximately 1.8 acres, at 1170 Bellbuckle Wartrace Road at the corner of Fairfield Pike, rezoned from A1 to C1. The proposed use will be for a convenience store. Nearby uses included Cascade School across the street, Bedford County EMS has a building less than 300 feet away on Fairfield Pike, and a preschool formerly a convenient market is located two parcels south on Bellbuckle Wartrace Road. And it reads favorable unanimous recommendation from the Planning Commission. Staff has no objection as this is a corner parcel at a major crossroads on a state highway surrounded by educational slash institutional and local government uses and has access to public sewer.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion of second. Vote for discussion. Commissioner Hooker.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chairman. So we've had a lot of conversations with constituents over this piece of property, primarily due to the traffic issues surrounding Cascade School, both in the mornings and the afternoon. And so we have spoke with Road Superintendent Mark Clanton, as well as Superintendent. We have spoke with several other individuals and it's usually, most of the people we've talked to has been about 50/50, 50% for and 50% against. And so diving in a little bit deeper as to why they oppose it is primarily due to traffic. And so if we could and if nobody objects, I'd love to have Road Superintendent Mark Clanton come up and speak to the plan that him and the superintendent have came up with for that area.
Are you here, Mark? He is. Does anybody object to him coming to the lectern? All right. Mark, if you come up to the lectern, yeah, come right up here to, Mark. What did I, oh, did you ask for Mark or did you?
Ask Dr. Garrett.
I'm sorry. Well, my mind.
Yeah, I apologize. If Dr. Garrett wouldn't mind joining in because they've been working on this together.
I'm sorry, Dr. Garrett and Mark, there's a big difference. If you come to the front and press the mic and you got to hold the button while you talk, okay?
What exactly do you want us to talk about, about the traffic pattern that we're in discussions about? Dr. Garrett, myself have met, we've had some concerns brought to me and Dr. Garrett herself, and we've discussed looking at possible solutions or things.
... bus. So you may want to get that done. I know him, he's a very honorable fellow, but stuff happens.
All right, Commissioner Julie Sanders, been patient.
One thing I wanted to point out for some of our newer commissioners is back when Cascade High School was built, I know this was a big problem when we went through this, and I know it improved significantly. And one of the things that the schools did back then was they alternated the times that they start, and that helped quite a bit, and the times they end. And I know that the elementary school and the high school don't start at the same times anymore, and I think that did help quite a bit.
They all three start at different times.
Commissioner Yaki.
And I asked Dr. Garrett, but just for the rest of the commissioners, there is a paid crossing guard assigned to the school.
There is a paid crossing guard. I do want to say that they are hard to find. It is a low-paying job with few hours, but we do have one, a great one, in that area.
Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you. So I just want to kind of quickly say, Dr. Garrett, thank you for being here. Mr. Clanton, thanks for being here as well. And also want to say thank you to you as well, Mr. Clanton, for being there on every email exchange and every phone call. It's been very instrumental to, especially, I'm sure Commissioner Hooker and I, as we talk to the constituents out in the community. I know that you mentioned that there is talks about a plan being worked out, and I understand that, and I understand that nothing is on paper at this time. But can you give the rest of the body here kind of an idea of when you feel an appropriate plan, a viable plan, a solution would be in place to simply address the congestion that's already there? And if this opportunity presents itself and is approved, to relieve the congestion in the kind of the harder times that some of these folks are having getting in and out of that school?
Our goal is to have something in place next year. Our dream would be to have, you know, some places to bring those cars off the road as many as we can. That would take maybe gravel, maybe some more asphalt to get them on our campus and off those main roads. When you make a transition change, it's best to do that when the new year starts. And so hopefully, we could have that in place and continue to study, to put all our brains together, to school side, county side, and make the best plan so we could get the information out to parents and implement it for the next school year.
Commissioner Epperson.
I would like to amend the motion on the floor to say what John T. said, that we should continue, you know, as long as it's a contingency that we have the frontage that we need, then we would approve it.
Okay, who made the motion? Did, I need to, we need to make sure they're going to accept that. Who made the original motion?
I made the motion, but can we do that? I mean, that's a zoning issue and it's not in the zoning.
You're correct about that, but I think it would hold if you pass that contingent upon getting it in the short term. That's why I asked Mark Clanton, does he know what he needs generally?
So the question is, Commissioner Thomas, are you going to, will you accept amendment to your motion? Because there's a motion of second on the floor. Is that not correct?
I just need a clarification, how we hold him up without holding him hostage.
Back to the legal. What say you?
If he's promising to do something that's the basis for this rezoning, I think you can make it contingent upon that. Now, the practical problem is going to be what you want, but I would think, as slick as you are and the connections you've got with T-Dot, you could figure that out. But if you want to disregard that and move forward, I mean, he's an honorable man. If he's around here and he's alive, I don't think there'd be much problem.
Commissioner Thomas, you wish to accept it?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I do.
So, and then who was the second to, you were the second and you're comfortable with that?
I'm okay with it too, but I can tell you right now, I know Dwayne Sullivan really well, and his word is his bond. But now whatever y'all want to do is fine, but I'm with Thomas on his word.
Right, but the motion on the floor and with the second was to approve it, and she offered the amendment, and y'all are in agreement with the amendment. So everybody understands that's now the main motion.
And doing that, but I don't want this to slow him down on what he's planning on doing while we make up our mind whether we want 20 feet or 100 feet. Now, we need to get on that and not hold him up at all.
That's a very good practical problem, and I don't know whether Mark can solve that or not.
I can solve that question about how much we need, but it's not going to be a quick thing. I'll have to get with T-Dot and I'll have to, we'll have to look at future plans of what we would like to see in that intersection that T-Dot would allow. So if you do make an adjustment to, an amendment to the motion, just don't put a specified amount of what you've got just for future things. I can almost say with somewhat 50% certainty, it would be no less than 50-foot additional right of way there. And I think that should do that, but I don't want that be locked in stone because I don't have that, we're not that far along in the process for me to give you a length of that.
Okay, so what I think's being said, and let's make sure we're clear on it, and then you guys go where you want to go, is if you accept this amendment to be contingent on, if he doesn't have the, actually what the contingent is, the zoning can't go forward. Is that what you're saying?
If you choose to pass it that way, that is correct. Now, you could make it, you could make your part of it loose enough that wouldn't hold him up. If you think it would be a maximum of pick of footage, then, and you're saying maybe 50 or no more if you want to make it, or withdraw that if you want to march forward. And I'm like Squire Anderson here, if he's around and alive, his word is good as gold. But he may not be. I'm just looking at the gotchas which seem to come up more and more these days.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
This sounds to me like it's a conditional rezoning, and I don't know that we can do that. I mean, can we put conditions on whether we're going to rezone or not? I think the original motion was, are we going to rezone, yes or no? Mr. Clanton's already said he's had discussions with them. The owner's already said he's going to do this. Why are we talking about putting additional conditions on there, 50 feet, 80 feet, 100 feet, 1,000 feet? I mean, that's, that puts everybody in a hot box right there. I think, I just, I'm not comfortable with where we are.
As long as you know what I just said, and if you're comfortable moving forward, and I would be too, but.
Again, but I believe Commissioner Thomas and Commissioner Anderson agree, they're okay with it being amended to what Commissioner Epperson is suggesting. So are we still in agreement with that, or do you want to say no to that, Commissioner Thomas? You had the, you had the motion.
I'd like to withdraw that. Deal with the rezoning and that only, and I'm like Commissioner Anderson, I've known Dwayne Sullivan all my life, worked with him, and.
So Commissioner Epperson, are you willing to withdraw that, or do you want to vote?
I mean, I'm fine. I think that, you know, like they said, if he's around, he'll do it. I see where John T.'s saying, you know, he could have a heart attack tomorrow and die.
Okay, so Commissioner Anderson has.
Commissioner Thomas, I want to withdraw too. I've known Dwayne my whole life. He's a good friend of mine, he's an honorable guy, and his words is bond.
So, Mr. Chairman, we're back on the original motion. That's correct. We're back on the original motion unless there's a second by somebody, I guess, to try to go for the amendment. But again, the original has not agreed to it, so it would be a vote off then to become the main motion. So do you want to withdraw, or you want to keep your motion in the mix, Commissioner Epperson?
I'll withdraw it, that's.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else? Commissioner Thomas Thompson, I'm sorry.
Seems like we have two issues here, about the same thing. It's, we've got one out, 41A, that wanted to put a.
You can't really mix these.
I know, but my question was, as a beer board member for years, he is aware that he cannot get a beer license? That's correct.
Okay, Commissioner Mark Thomas.
And I had this discussion with Dwayne, and his words is, he knows that. He said, I make more money off selling a biscuit than I can do a can of beer. And I quote him in saying that.
Okay, any other comments? So the motion on the floor is to approve it off the recommendation of favorable. So yes would be to rezone it, no would be to not rezone it, and somebody had their hand up. So before, all right, Commissioner Johnson.
When, for those of you on the Planning Commission, when he comes back with his site plan, doesn't it have to be reapproved? Doesn't it have to be approved by the zoning office codes?
Yes.
So there's another chance to look at it before it's approved by them to see if he's gone through with that. So I'm comfortable with that then.
Commissioner Yaki.
And I know John T. knows all, but I'm very uncomfortable about tacking something else on to a motion that came from the Planning Commission, but.
Call the question, Mr. Chairman. Okay, so we've got the question called. Are we ready to vote? Okay, now when your name's called, vote for or against. Yes is that we're going to rezone it per the request of the, or recommendation of the Planning Commission, and no would be not to rezone it. Does everybody understand what they're voting on? Okay, when your name's called, vote for or against.
Commissioner Yaki. Commissioner Vick?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Mark Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Pinson? Commissioner Pinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Neely?
Yes.
Commissioner Maddox?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hooker?
Yes.
Commissioner Farrer?
Ah.
Commissioner Epperson?
Yes.
Commissioner Brothers?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyette?
Yes.
Commissioner Boutwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Does anyone wish to change your vote? Seventeen ayes, zero noes.
All right, and next item on there is the rezoning that we had the public hearing regarding 41A North, the 3034, 41A North. So this rezoning placed on the agenda by the Rules and Legislative Committee without a recommendation, the planning commission's recommendation was unfavorable to rezone it. What's the wishes of the body?
Move to follow the wishes of the planning commission.
Which would be unfavorable. So we have a motion as second, Commissioner Brothers seconded that. All right, now we're open for discussion on this one. Is there any particular comment? All right. Call the question. All right, yes would be honoring the recommendation of the planning commission, which would be unfavorable. So understand that if you vote yes, you're, you're voting to not rezone it. If you vote no, then that would be to rezone it, for the purpose of this. Everybody understand what you're voting on? When your name's called, vote for or against.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Boutwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyette?
Yes.
Commissioner Brothers?
Yes.
Commissioner Epperson?
Yes.
Commissioner Farrer?
Ah.
Commissioner Hooker?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Maddox?
Yes.
Commissioner Neely?
Yes.
Commissioner Pinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Vick?
Yes.
Commissioner Yaki?
Yes.
Does anyone wish to change your vote? Seventeen ayes, zero noes.
All right, we're coming down the home stretch here. Nothing to report under law enforcement, courthouse and property. Under financial management, we do have the BCMS uncollectibles, that's a formality this body needs to approve, those being written off.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, motion second, any comments or questions? All in favor?
Ah.
Any opposed? All right, and I believe we don't have anything else except announcements. Was you, were you the motion to approve, Drew? Okay, Commissioner Hooker, you got it? All right, nothing on the other business, so we're on to announcements. I've got a couple of announcements I need to make, and then there may be more among us here. So we want to say a big thank you to the Shovel Public Works employees who did a fantastic job with lighting the outdoor tree and wreaths for us this year. I believe it was Kevin Garren, Adam Heiss, Rodney Lamb, Joseph Tally, and a special thanks to Buck Ballard with the city who coordinated this for us. Also want to remind you of the holiday schedule, since it's upon us and the offices, the main offices will be closed a few of those days. So for the Christmas holiday, it'll be Thursday, Friday, and Monday, which would be December the 22nd, 23rd, and 26th, these are posted on our site and will be posted. And then Christmas Eve, which was Friday, December the 30th, we'll be observing that day. So those are the holidays that the main administrative offices will be closed, obviously public safety continues to operate. And I want to remind everyone that the County Powers Act workshop is coming up on December the 21st, it's from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at 200 Dover Street. And it says, don't have to sign up. So this is something that Rules and Legislative Committee's been looking at, studying, thinking about, and there's going to be a workshop on it, so anyone that has interest in understanding more about that, wouldn't be an action that night by the body, it would be simply fact finding in relation to that. And the, I want to remind you, the Financial Management Committee, because of the holidays, is going to meet next Tuesday, the same night that the regular other committees meet in advance of you, at the 4:15 time, they'll be here, because all the other meetings are here that night, they won't meet at Dover Street, so that everybody understands, I want to be clear about it. So 4:15 they'll meet, and then the other committees, under their normal schedules, will meet right behind that. Those are the things that I had wrote down, is there, Commissioner Yaki?
I would just like to say a big thank you to Suzanne and April in your office for the decorations of everything that they've put up. And Commissioner Anderson, they did that on their time now, so don't fuss at me, and a, and a lot of their expenditure. The second thing is, I, I shared with Dr. Garrett the generosity of the departments and the commissioners for the juvenile detention students. And Dr. Garrett, if, if nobody has objection, I, I'd like for you to just come up and, and say how you feel about the importance of helping Kelly and the staff down there as much as we can.
Okay, this is just an announcement, is there any objection to that? All right, come on up.
I almost said it earlier, but I didn't know if I could, so thank you so much. We just want to thank you for everything that you've done for our students there. Those students are experiencing some trauma, and we appreciate the generosity that you guys in all departments have extended toward our students. It will brighten their day, and hopefully help us get them on, back on track and back in classrooms, so they can learn and we can achieve. So we appreciate the generosity, thank you so much.
All right, is there any other announcements before we adjourn? Christmas is upon us, we will have committee meeting, but Merry Christmas to all of you for sure, if I don't get to see you.